Call this meeting to order and welcome all of you for being here today. We appreciate it very much. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Commissioner Fryberg.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands alone, nation under God, indivisible, and liberty of the us all.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Papia will now lead us in my invocation.
Good morning Father, we thank you for this morning. We thank you for bringing us all together. We just want to say thank you for the moisture that you've brought to our county and thank you for the protection that you've given to all of our workers and the people who live here. Father, we just asked this morning that you would be here with us in this meeting. Help us to speak the truth. Help us to understand what it is we're here for. Father, that we are to serve the county and that we are to do it with hearts of servants. Just ask that you be here and be blessed this time in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you Commissioner.
Does anybody know how to shut a door?
Thank you. We'll now go to the order of business of approval of minutes for December 28, 2011. Is there a motion of approval?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We will now go to approval of the meeting agenda. I do have a request to please consider moving up item number 14 to item number three. The Children's Trust Fund grant application. Pat needs to get this grant in. Is there any opposition to my request?
None.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, I would like to now call for approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We will now go to approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second motion.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We will now go to public requests. At this time, if there's anyone who would wish to speak on anything for two minutes on a subject that's not currently listed on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Any public comment? Seeing none, we will now go to item number one. Is she here now?
She is.
Hi Joyce, are you out there? If you could come forward, we would love to celebrate with you this special occasion. Dorothy, if you wouldn't mind just telling us a little bit about Joyce and all the great things that she's done, just kind of a pat on the back that she really deserves.
You know, she's got the best employee ever. She is so precise in everything that he does. She gets all her work done in her own time. She gets constantly cracking them up to get her into these tight sheets and they don't know what to do now that she's not yelling at them on Thursdays in her body.
Oh my God. And her bed also.
And she's always there to drop her bath on the night. And I think this is her very life.
I've been working here in GIS for four years, five. I still call her every other Thursday to just for her to tell me to turn in my tennis shoes. You know, when I first started working for Dispatch, Dorothy was the first one that I met working there. And I stayed for, one day we had a meeting before I even deployed there and I stayed for a while and watched, observed Dispatchers and she was the first one I observed. And one of the first things that I said, I said, "This is the person that I wanted to work with." And you know, long ago, I got my wish. So she was stuck with me for a very, very long time.
Yes, you played the part.
I know, I know. She played, you know, this lady was by my side, you know. Everybody down there is Dorothy Lady, Jennifer and Julie. It would've been a long, you know, but Joyce was my, she was my teacher. She probably was the first thing I knew of.
Thank you, Ruben. Half of the people in this room probably don't even know who I am because I'm the night show. They never would've seen me.
Well Joyce, we have a class that we have for you on behalf of the staff, the commission, and everyone in Torrance County who has been so blessed by your service. It reads, "In appreciation and recognition for eighteen years of dedicated service for the citizens of Torrance County. As you retire, keep a firm grip on your perspective towards life. Life is not measured so much by the quantity of days, but by their quality. Bring your all to bear upon the coming days of your life, so that each day will be the fulfillment of a hope, a dream. Fill your days with beautiful memories and joyful moments. Don't retire from life, but continue to experience all that life has to offer. As you retire, share your wisdom and your knowledge. See the gift of retirement as a gift of new horizons." Thank you. We're trying to keep you warm in this very cold winter that we're facing.
Oh my goodness, thank you so much. Thank you Tracy, I love you too. Thanks for being with me. I was just going with me.
Congratulations, what a wonderful way to start our meeting today and we just thank you for all of the time that you've given to this great county. We will now go to item number two, allocation of wind pillow capital outlay priorities. This was on our last commission meeting agenda. Commissioner Papia was not able to be with us, so we did not allocate all of the funds from the will payment because we'd like for her to be able to state some of her priorities as well. So we will begin with letter A under animal shelter addition. And Joyce, if you could just kind of go through these allocations and a little bit of justification behind them so that Commissioner Papia can comment.
Sure Madam Chair. Excuse me. About eight months ago, the commission voted to move the animal shelter into the old dispatch center on Salt Mission's Trail. The move was supposed to be temporary because there was not quite sufficient room for the amount of animals that had been coming in. We did build a lean-to and put some outside kennels on the south side of the building, but it's a little cold to keep animals outside. So the animal shelter staff did put together a real simple, simple drawing of a 600 square foot addition that would service all of their needs for the projected future. Six hundred square foot, I did get an estimate from a local contractor, is about 25 to 30 square foot, which would be about $18,000 plus equipping with kennels and seats and plumbing and stuff. So I put a rough estimate of about $30,000 in there for a 600 square foot addition. And I think the animal shelter staff is here to speak on behalf of that as well.
Cindy?
Good morning. I prepared a year-end, a year's report and as you already know, I usually at my year-end report, I reflect on last year's stats and things. I'll save this for my update, but just quickly, we have seen an increase in numbers. Last year, we, at the other shelter with the capability of 24 kennels, we did a total of 683 animals there. This year, as of April, we moved into the new building, we had an increase, we did 690 animals with six kennels. So if you do the numbers, that's kind of amazing. We had a couple of different problems. Animal Services in Albuquerque and Animal Humane Association passed a new law. In May, one of my big pushes to saying, "Oh, we'll be able to transport all these animals and we already refer the public into Albuquerque if they have large litters of, you know, puppies and kittens and things and they're always glad to take them, so we'll be able to do all this deferral and send these people, you know, to help with the lack of cages and space." They passed a new law in May that if you do not hold a current driver's license identification that you live in the city of Albuquerque, they no longer take animals. So, that was an unexpected, horrible, horribly bad for us because we can no longer, you know, you call in with a litter of ten, we can't say, "Oh, we don't have space for that, just take it into Albuquerque, you know, they'll gladly take them." We can't do that any longer. So, we've had a few problems with that. We've been extremely over capacity. We've worked really well. Animal Humane Association also stopped a lot of their transports. They were getting in animals from different facilities all over the state that were breaking with permo and upper respiratory infection a couple of times this year. They ended up having to euthanize their, almost their entire kennels because of upper respiratory and pulmonary disease that were being transported in. So we went through a stint where they would not allow us to transport anything. And then they also got a new veterinarian staff and completely shut down the sterilization and the vet clinic there, so that stopped us from doing some transports. We're now back on board with them. They approved us because we spend the time and money to socialize our animals, vaccinate every animal we send to them. And it was explained to me that it's not a matter of their worry about us bringing it in, it's a matter of it's already there. So they want to protect our animals against the upper respiratory infection and things. So, this year, we have actually transported, oh I didn't on this, but I'm sorry, out of, I can't really see today, I have a cold. We had an increase in dogs of 81 for this year from last year. Cats, we were minus 58. We had a kind of a situation last year that we had to take in a whole bunch of cats from one residence which shot us up. But we actually, I can't find my staff here, I'm sorry. Yeah, they don't work. Okay, here it is. Thank you. Out of the total of 690 animals, we now do statistics on what we call live exits. We had, out of 690, we had 341 that were live exits. That means they were adopted, they were transported, they went to rescue, whatever, reclaimed by their owners. We had a huge increase because of our new location of owner reclaimers. Non-live exits was about 349, which that does include animals that are brought in that are already DOA. They've been hit by cars, they're laying by the side of the road, they were not all euthanized animals. Also, we do provide the service of euthanizing for the public. We have been seeing a lot of that, elderly animals or sick and injured animals that are coming in that we provide. So, you know, we've done pretty good with not having to euthanize for space this year because of our adoption and our transports went up. So, with all of that said, with the new addition that we're requesting, we're not requesting any more manpower. I was looking at the statistics and based on the 24 kennels that we had at the other shelter, with the new ten that we're asking for, they're not asking to get us back up to 24, we're just asking for a new ten indoor/outdoor in the back. That doesn't quite get us up to what we had, but we won't need any additional staff to take care of that either. So the $30,000, we're hoping will cover everything, you know, the remodel, the indoor/outdoors. And I ask you, please also consider the fact that the property owners on the other side of us are requesting their property back. Apparently there was a miscalculation. We need to pull those outdoor kennels out of there, which as I'm aware of, you were told before, the audience that they put up, or it was all done with reused materials and there's holes from all of the other previously bolted into the materials that are in that. And that thing leaked so bad that we had at least a quarter of an inch of ice in those stainless steel kennels and we were not able to utilize any of those during this winter time. It's just too wet back there for them, for any dog, you know, whether we decided to put in dog houses or whatever we were going to do, the actual use of those kennels, we can't do it. So, with the increase in numbers and we've managed for this trial period to get through it, but with the new rules and regulations in Albuquerque, not accepting animals from us anymore, you know, from the public, that, you know, you have to have an ID card that says you're an in-city resident to take those animals now, we're just pleading that you please approve this so we can continue to take care of the county. You know, we're right now having to put people off for a week to ten days to make room for, you know, owner turnovers and things, to make room for all this trades. Like I say, with an increase of 81 animals this year and using six cages as opposed to 28, it's been quite a challenge for us, but we've managed to do it. It's worked out.
Well, thank you for your presentation Cindy, for your work with the animals and for all of your staff's work. So we will take that into consideration and the dollar amount on that was 30,000, correct?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to have to look at my phone during the meeting, but Representative King, who planned on being here today, is not going to be able to be here, but she's going to be calling in any minute, so when she, I think what we'll go ahead and do, if you all don't mind, Representative King is chairing a committee today, so if we can move the Tri-County Juvenile Justice Board discussion as the next item, so that when she calls in, she can make her comments and be able to get back to her meeting. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
You okay with that? Okay, thank you. So at this time, if Pat Lincoln would come up and begin the presentation on the Tri-County Juvenile Justice Board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is the plan for the Tri-County Juvenile Justice Board that has been updated and it's just about ready to go. This is kind of an outline graphic form of what we are proposing to do. And this is an explanation comparative of what we are proposing to do. This one explains a little bit more, so. The Tri-County Juvenile Justice Board is an appointed advisory board by the county commission. You appoint annually by resolution. We have currently been working under a planning grant, a CYFD planning grant. I'm the coordinator of the board, I'm not a voting member of the board. And through the planning process, we have completed a very thorough needs assessment in the county. We did a lot of data research and compilation and analysis. We also conducted six community focus groups and over 20 key person interviews. We included not only the adults, but also the youth of the county in that process. And we have now gotten to the point of looking towards what we are going to do to address what we identified as the key priority areas. And if you look at the back of that strategic plan, starting on page 14, you will see that we have as our first priority, abuse and neglect, and our goal is to enhance the safety and well-being of the children in the tri-county region of Torrance, Southern Santa Fe, and Eastern Burnaleo Counties. And we have a second goal for that priority, which is to increase personal and family safety and resiliency for residents in the tri-county region of the same three counties. And then our second priority is capacity building. We are just getting started. We are a very diverse and comprehensive group. We are working to strengthen collaboration among the membership, the provider agencies, various nonprofit organizations, federal, state, and local governments, so that we can support our community efforts to prevent and reduce juvenile delinquency. And finally, we have a second objective, a goal there, which is to develop standards of care to implement intervention services in a rural setting. Standards of care means that we want all children and youth in the county to have access to the same standard of care, the same services, the same treatment, the same enrichment programs that children in, say, Burnaleo County would have. And in order to do that, we need to increase the capacity of our current resources in the county. And that's why we're here today. We have developed as a strategy, in order to do this, the concept of a children and youth service center. And it would, it would serve multi-functional. And if you look at the graphic, and there's some extras if anyone understands who's right If you look at the graphic, you'll see that we have two distinct target populations here. We are trying to impact both education and community safety in our community, our tri-county community. And so our target population for one segment of this program is ages K through 3. We've chosen that because, first of all, it is the best age for actual prevention services. If you can attack those risk factors when children are young and meet the needs that are there, then we have a far better chance of avoiding problems arising down the road. So we are proposing, through some Children's Trust Fund funding, which you'll hear about next, that we provide some tutoring services after school and on Saturdays. That would specifically be addressed towards literacy and reading skills. And in order to do this, we would adopt the TIC-FLYT curriculum, which is a curriculum that is heavily emphasizing decoding skills, so we have phonemic approaches, phonics, decoding words in context, emphasis on comprehension and fluency. It is a very well-established curriculum that was originally developed for individuals with dyslexia and learning disorders, but it has been applied broadly in classroom settings, et cetera. We have talked with the Estancia Elementary School principal and their instructional specialists because we want to be fully in cooperation with this whole district and not in conflict with them. They are very enthusiastic about this project and have offered support, whatever we need in terms of training, data, help with evaluations, so that we have a control group that we can compare progress against. We are not intending to limit this program to Estancia down the road, but in order to obtain the funding that we need to really implement a broad county-wide program, we're going to need additional funding. Therefore, we need to establish a higher program and prove that our strategy works. So we need to be able to collect those outcomes for a year, which we can do in cooperation with the Estancia schools. The other part of that is that parent education classes will be offered on a monthly basis and parent status conferences for children participating in the tutor program will be required. And the Torrance County Project Office staff will be helping with the parent education classes and also where there is indication that some in-home support services are indicated, they will be facilitating that part of the service. The second part of this is the target population, which are those students that are out of school on short or long-term out-of-school suspensions, dropouts, delinquents that are on probation services, and youths that may be on house arrest. So, kids that we already know are at risk because they're exhibiting the behaviors or they're already involved in the juvenile justice system, so to speak. For those individuals using the same facility, we are proposing to establish a day reporting center where we can offer tutoring support, co-house some GED classes. As you know, our GED programs are looking for permanent homes. We can offer life skills and we are able to monitor their work and their progress. And again, we also will offer parenting skills through that. The way that this would work is for those kids that are actually in school, enrolled in school, but on a long-term suspension, they would report to their school in the morning and check in. And then they would be transported to the service center. And those schools that would want to provide them with work that is consistent with their current class load and curriculum, that would come with them on that day. And our staff then would monitor and be there to help with support and completion of that work. At the end of the day, they would go back to their school and check out. And in that way, the schools are not losing credit for attendance. They actually will be working directly on that schoolwork in a supervised setting. So, it's a win-win situation. And again, the Estancia schools are supportive of this. What are we trying to do with this? We want to improve literacy, we want to reduce delinquency, we are looking to foster an increase in independent learning skills, and we also will offer job skill training so there's an increase in job readiness among our youth. We need support, funding for operations in order to secure and sustain a facility. We have a couple of different facilities that we would be able to rent. We believe that they would also be large enough to, if the county so desires, we realize that the project office location was meant to be temporary and there would be room to co-house project office facilities in this building, but we need some operational support. And so we are requesting that you consider allotting $30,000 in your fund to the Juvenile Justice Youth and Family Service Center. We will work diligently to secure additional funding, so this is not simply a county burden. We will approach Santa Fe County since the juvenile population that we will serve usually will cover the entire county from the get-go if we have other schools that want to have their kids participate in the juvenile justice part of this and in the tutoring services and the mentoring and the actual life skills programs, et cetera, for the older kids. That will be available to the others. That will be available to the other school districts as well. And most of those referrals will come from schools, from the JPO, Child Protective Services, and from youth-serving agencies in the county and the courts. For the K through 3 program, that's our primary prevention program, that will be open to all children that are in the area served by the Estancia School District initially. And the referrals could come from parents. They could come from the schools themselves. And again, they could come from youth-serving agencies that are interfacing with kids that we believe needs, or they believe needs of extra help. We know that you are bombarded with a lot of requests, but we honestly believe that the significance of this is that this is our youth and our future. And if we can work together to provide these extra supports, we can change lives and we can avoid a lot of expensive programs, both in terms of lost human resources and the expenditure of physical resources and time and energy down the road. And so we would ask that you consider our request, and I have some other board members here that may want to address it, if you want to add anything or not.
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, I'm not nearly as old as Ms. Lincoln. I'd just like to echo her comments. You know, we can invest in a program like this and give it the tools to seek alternative funding through grants and so on in the future with a small investment, where we can continue to expend our tax dollars on these children for the next 20 or 30 years. If we don't equip them with the skill sets that they need to be successful to get jobs, to manage their families, and so on, instead of being a taxpayer, they'll be a burden on a taxpayer. And I'd just like to encourage you to give this consideration. I know that equipped with the data that the pilot project can show that funding can be reached out for and the program can expand and include the K through 3 program, I think it's, I think it's important to our youth. And I thank you for letting us present.
Thank you, Judge. Is there anyone else on the board that would like to speak in favor of this request?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, good morning. Esther Bakker with General Salvation. We've done a lot of work on the strategic plan. We've identified key areas, and I have to congratulate Pat and Billy on their hard work and efforts. Their strategic plan has become, and the assessment that they've done, has become the pilot, has become the proof for the rest of the state. The rest of the state has looked at our assessment and has tried to partner and use it as an example. It's an excellent piece of work. If you haven't had the opportunity to review it, I urge you to review it. I think that we, as a county, always have cared a great deal about our youth. We, as a county, have always cared a great deal about what we become in our county. And I'm proud to say that I've been from Torrance County the majority of my career, and I, my heart belongs to Torrance County. This is an excellent project. It's an excellent project in that we're, number one, seeing which kids we can divert or avoid coming into the system, and, number two, keeping those kids that are in the system here, in our house, in our home, providing to their needs rather than sending them. I ask that you take a careful inspection of the proposal and support it, please. Thank you.
And so I'm going to leave you with one more statistic, which is, who are we proposing to serve and how much is it going to cost? So we are proposing that in the K through 3 program, that we will initially serve 30 children and 45 parents. This is based on the potential pool of candidates for the pilot program, which would be 88 students in the Estancia area and their parent cohorts. The secondary prevention will target initially 50 middle-age, middle- and high-school-age youth and 60 parents who are receiving also the secondary intervention services. That makes for a total of 185 individuals. And for the, just the children's trust fund portion of it, if we get that funding, that would be at a cost of about $239.74 per student. So in the long run, it's a lot of things for our benefit. Thank you.
Rhonda, are you there? Can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Good morning, Representative King. We have just heard a presentation from Pat Lincoln in regards to the Juvenile Justice Board request for $30,000. We had Judge Jones speak in favor of it, as well as Esther Bakker. There were also several members from the Juvenile Justice Board in the audience, Anne Marie Nunez, Debbie Ortiz, Valerie is on, are you on it? Valerie from the project office is here. I apologize if I leave anyone out, but there has been many people that have spoken in favor of it, Representative King. But as the chair of this committee, I was wondering if you had any comments that you would like the commission to consider?
Well, thank you so much, and I apologize that I wasn't able to be there in person today, but House Appropriations and Finance Committee, which I am a member of, started meeting on Monday. And so again, I apologize that I wasn't able to be there today on what I feel is really an important issue. And I've had the opportunity to co-chair our Juvenile Justice Board with Commissioner Travis Gutierrez. And during our meetings and with the help of state funding, we were able to do a survey of our community and look at the needs that need to be addressed in our community. And I know that all of you are aware of the high incidence of domestic violence in our community, as well as other indicators which have certainly plagued our community for some time. And I believe this is an opportunity for the commission and the community to address some of these important needs that have become apparent in this survey. And so I would just ask the commission to favorably consider this funding. The funding that the commission would allocate for this, I think is just such, would provide such an important seed money that then would allow us to begin to leverage those dollars into other state dollars, as well as other grants, to really address the needs in our communities, not only for children that are within the juvenile justice system, but also for children that are at risk. And I would say, I think, the goal of our Juvenile Justice Board, and certainly a goal that I've had, is really how can we comprehensively address the needs of our at-risk children, as well as children that are in the system? And there's good research that says if we're able to put into place programming for these youths, we can make a difference in their lives and help them get on the right track. And this is, I think, a golden opportunity for the commission to fund something that will really have a lasting, long-term impact, not only on our community, but also on the citizens of the state of New Mexico. And I don't know if this was shared in earlier testimony, but in July, Esther Bakker, Matt Page, and myself attended a program in New Jersey that is funded to the NEKAC Foundation. And they are looking at funding a rural pilot site on delivery of services to juveniles, because we know that juveniles, especially in the rural area, do not have access to services that are available in our more urban areas than our counties, such as Bernalillo. And that's unacceptable. Our children in our rural communities should have access to programs just as a child in another community has, and it shouldn't matter where you live. You should have the right to access those services so that you have a brighter future. And I really believe this initial seed money will help us in moving forward on a pilot project to show how services can be delivered in a rural community, in a rural city, that then maybe hopefully will even allow us to apply for this grant from the NEKAC Foundation that will not only be a model for the state of New Mexico, but the nation. And so I hope the commission will look at this favorably. I really do believe it's an opportunity for us to leverage some initial dollars and create a program to serve our youth and to help our children that are in need. And it's really a golden opportunity to have a lasting impact on our community and the children in the state of New Mexico. So thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of this. As you can see, I'm passionate about it. I think that we need to begin cooperating with our, not only at our state level, with our juvenile justice issues, but cooperating and partnering with not only our schools, but our county commissions, because we do have limited resources, and there's a lot of needs out there. But hopefully, by partnering together, we can create enough mass that we truly can make a difference in our communities. And I'm excited about the potential that we have to be a model site in delivering of services to our youth that are at risk and that are in the juvenile justice system. So again, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on what is really an important issue.
Thank you, Representative King. I'm going to step away from the table for just a moment so that I can add my comment, not as a county commissioner, but as a member of the board. My fellow commissioners, I just wanted an opportunity to stand before you today. I cannot vote on this particular issue because I serve on this board as a co-chair with Representative King, and I consider that one of my greatest honors since being able to take office as a county commissioner. I just kind of wanted to bring this home a little bit. We can give you lots of information about data, about statistics, but I kind of wanted just to share with you what a student really goes through from ages K through 3. From personal experience, I've seen my child struggling, wanting to learn how to read. And because of that, it's been very difficult. When I hear her read a book, she reads by memorizing. She has memorized words, and that's how she reads. By memorizing, she's not really able to tell you what the word means, so she's not really understanding what she's learning, what she's reading, but she just wants to get a good reading grade. And as you know, if you can't read, how can you be successful in the world? How can you fill out a job application? How can you read a paragraph when you're picked on by the teacher to read in front of your class? It not only affects your educational level, but it affects your self-esteem, because if you're learning something only by memorization, it's very difficult to take a test or to feel like you can just even be at the same standard as your peers and your friends. So I have watched my own child really struggle with this, and even though she's in sixth grade, she would not be able to participate in this program. But I do know that those students that are under her grade level would really just be so blessed by the opportunity not to just pick up a book and read it through memorization, but be able to understand what they're reading. And so I would urge you to please consider this, really just $30,000, what it could do, what it could really do. And when you look at the other side of the target population of students on long-term suspension and dropouts, had there maybe possibly been a program that would have taught a child how to read successfully, maybe they wouldn't have been angry in school or maybe dropped out when they were able to make that decision on their own. And now they need a GED. And when they go to take that GED test, are they going to be able to understand the words that are in front of them? I think that my rep can attest, as the director of the Estanci Bel Economic Development Association, that when the wind farm came and tested students that possibly wanted to go into that field, there were several students that could not pass the reading part of the computer test. Now, we want businesses to come to our county, but what we need to do is go all the way back and prepare K through 3 so that they can, one day, not just have a job in this county, but possibly a career. We need to see how we can help both sides, because I just know that if somebody that dropped out could have had a program that could have possibly taught them how to read, that maybe their life would be different. And we have an opportunity today to possibly make that difference. So I urge you to please, please consider this. It will help children that you'll never meet, but our county will be blessed by it in the long term. Thank you. Pat, did you want to say anything else?
No.
Okay. All right. I know there are several board members that do need to get back to work, and I know Representative King, if you're still on the line, you have to chair your board. Are there any questions on this particular item before anybody leaves?
I have none. I'm sure.
And I'm sorry, Sheriff White, that I didn't recognize you earlier. He is certainly on our board as well and has been very helpful. So now we will go to the next request, which is vehicles for code enforcement and maintenance.
Madam Chair, at the last meeting, I did ask the commission to consider purchasing vehicles for the maintenance department and code enforcement. I had some prices on used vehicles, and you guys asked us to find prices on new vehicles. I didn't get copies to you because the state contract didn't get signed to us until late yesterday afternoon, but I do have some prices on vehicles here. It looks like a half-ton Dodge pickup, four-wheel drive, is going to cost about $21,000. A Chevy half-ton pickup, four-wheel drive, is going to cost just a little over $20,000. And Ford, four-wheel drive, is going to cost right at just under $20,000. And that's, of course, without any additions, no toolboxes, fuel tanks, not fuel tanks, toolboxes, bed liners, things like that.
Thank you for getting that documentation to us. The other thing, Commissioner Athabia, that was offered at the last meeting is Sheriff White did offer two, are they Chevy Tahos?
No, they're Ford Expeditions.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ford Expeditions, okay. That he thought maybe we could consider to use where there was a need for a vehicle, so I wanted to make you aware of that as well. Are there any questions on this particular?
So the total for the two vehicles, or you're speaking of two vehicles doing?
Well, the prices I gave you are per vehicle.
Okay. So we're looking at $40,000?
Yes.
My only question would be Ford Expeditions. We're talking trucks with beds. These guys are hauling stuff. How, I mean, is that going to be an issue? And I guess we need to ask them if they're in here. I mean, is an expedition going to suit their needs if we're asking for open-bed trucks for them to haul stuff and have toolboxes and any of that here?
Carl's shaking his head no.
The expedition might work for code enforcement, but...
The expedition might work for code enforcement, but with the stuff that we haul, generally oversized, eight-foot or better, expedition wouldn't be, it'd be just as bad as that little one that I've got now. Got stuff sticking out four-foot.
Thank you, Carl.
For code enforcement, why the expedition would probably work all right, just like the Bronco did. There are times, especially in the summer, when a man is picking up a bag of trash or something on the side of the road, and it's pretty nauseous inside the vehicle. So it'd be probably better for him in order to haul signs around and things like that to have a pickup, kind of enclosed vehicle.
The other thought that occurred to me in considering this request is if there are two vehicles that are being offered from the sheriff's department, and they're the same kind of vehicles, are they the same make, same model?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I thought if one were to break, we could, you know, use the other one for parts, or we could have a backup if that one wasn't going to, you know, make it. But as far as how you see them, do you see them lasting much longer? Or do you think it's just a big Band-Aid on a problem that we just need to correct?
As it stands right now, with the two Ford Expeditions, they are high mileage. We've had to really extend their life because of the vehicle issue. As far as the Band-Aid, I feel it's somewhat of a Band-Aid. They are high mileage, they do need some repair. Mechanically, they're running fine right now, but with any vehicle with 100-something thousand miles on it, eventual somethings will happen. But as for the sheriff's department, we are offering to give those to whoever they need.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay. If there was no further comment on that, we can now go to security for elected officials' offices. Nick, is that you?
Here in this building and as well as at the official complex, our current provider for fire suppression and sound and signal. I called them and met with one of their technicians yesterday, and he came through and gave us a walkthrough of the facility here. Pretty much gave them what we wanted as far as panic alarms and buttons and dialers and all the technicalities. So he said it'd be a couple days before he gets us some hard figures. So unfortunately, I don't have a bottom number for you, but as soon as I do, I'll forward that to Joy, and she can send it off to you guys or however you wish to receive it. They are, they came yesterday and gave us a walkthrough.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Okay, the Tahica Community Center, I have always asked for the Tahica Community Center to be considered when it comes to any kind of dollars that could maybe go towards some basic renovation. When it comes to exposed pipes that are in the bathroom that continue to freeze and break, I would like those fixed if possible. I have also requested possibly painting the interior of the building. I tried to do a lot just on my own, you know, shampooing the carpet or cleaning it. There's a lot of windows that need to be resealed, a lot of dirt comes in. Sometimes snow will blow in, and it's, one of the doors really needs to be repaired. All of the cabinets in the kitchen are falling apart. You know, it's just, it's really a wonderful building that just needs a little bit of attention so that we can bring it back to being usable for the people of that community and everybody that is able to rent it. I mean, it's a great facility, and I would hope that we can consider doing a little bit of just cleaning it up inside, you know, fixing the pipes so where they don't freeze, and putting some paint and sealing the holes and really, I mean, I'm not asking for much, so if it's possible at some point, or even if we could attack it little by little, that's something that I would hope that we would consider. We now go to county storage.
May I ask you, Commissioner?
Yes.
Is there anything else? I need to exit and go back to my committee, so I apologize that I'm interrupting you, but I thought I would just sign off if this was like unless there was something that you would like me to stay on for.
No, thank, no, thank you, Representative King. We are very gracious for your time, and we just hope you have a good meeting and have a good legislative session this year.
Well, thank you so much. I look forward to working with all of you.
Okay, so we will now go back to county storage.
Madam Chair, I spoke with the clerk's office.
Oh, she's here.
Madam Chair, and everyone.
I was talking as usual, sorry. At the last meeting, I asked that maybe we consider some storage, not just for me, but from every office in the county. I hope you could find some dollars to help us to get a building, because we do have lots of paper that we have to keep in store forever. We need it in a place that's going to be weatherproof, people can't get into, and I really hope that you will consider getting us some sort of storage, because even the manager's office, every office, we need some extra space.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Wanda.
Just to clarify, to apologize, you were speaking of a, maybe even a portable. This is something that would not hold secure documents or anything. This is something that would just hold documents and boxes?
Things that are not using anymore. Yes, it doesn't have to be, but we need to keep it out of the weather, that if we ever have to pull it out again, we could bring it to, for the public to view. But things that, you know, definitely not totally secure where nobody could get into the building or things like that.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But a portable would work, yes.
Thank you, Wanda.
You're welcome.
So now we are at the table. We have gone through all of the requests that are listed on the agenda. At this time, we can move forward with a vote specific to the letter that is next to the proposed allocation, or we can process the requests that came before us today and bring it back on a different agenda, except the pleasure of the commission. So we are now at the table for discussion.
How much money do we have? I'd hate to approve everything if I doubt we have $23.
We have somewhere around in the windmill, around $100,000. Actually, it's probably less than that. It's probably closer to 75. There's also, Madam Chair and commissioners, just to preserve information, there's also another fund in the county that's infrastructure tax that is only available, it's actually gross receipts tax, and it's only available for like bricks and mortar construction in the county. So there is another fund.
Do they have an idea what a portable building is going to run?
Well, we might just have a portable building that we could use for storage. What is it, about a 10 by 20?
10 by 20 is.
It'd probably be available in about a month and a half, two months?
I would say so.
Thank you.
It's basically is about boxcar storage.
Yes.
As to the building, you're speaking of, Joy?
Yes, sir, it's actually a Connex container. It's got two open doors that would go on the back of the truck, and change locks. So here, those are the only access doors. It would be, it's metal, so it would be weatherproof.
And it's, and it's almost brand new. I mean, there's no damage to nothing to it.
Do we have this, or will have this in our possession?
I'm, I'm, I'm working on acquiring it. It'll be about a month before we have it in our possession.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So the animal shelter addition could possibly come out of that line item that you just mentioned, Joy?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the amount that we have in that line item?
I'm trying to find it, actually. Trace, can you help me? What's the fund number on it for the treasure group or, I never mind, I found it. And we've got, it looks like we have about $70,000 in it right now. And that's money, that's revenue that comes in on a monthly basis, so it's just been rolling over for several years.
On the animal shelter, as easy as it is in the state to get a license with a fake address, we might consider, you know, getting an address of Burnaleo County. Just an idea.
I am kicking him under the table.
If I could just add a little bit more information, if you're considering allocating something from the infrastructure tax, we also use that as kind of a rainy day fund, so we certainly don't want to deplete it. I mean, it's, it's just kind of an emergency goal, too, but there is going to be one. It's your pleasure, Commissioner. Do you have any thoughts?
Well, I know a year ago, we did discuss that the animal shelter would be one of our priorities, and thank you, Cindy, for being so patient and being moved from here and there and everywhere. So for me, that's going to remain my priority until we get the animal shelter situated. Second on my list, if maybe we can pull $15,000 from this money sitting over here, and then pull $15,000 from the built money. And then my next thing would then be the juvenile justice board to go ahead and fund that money. The storage then is taken care of. The security for the elected officials, I believe, is, is it important that, it would be that all of the county offices would have access to panic buttons and, and stuff, not that it's just one office. So it'd be curious to see what that number amount would come in at, because I would like to see something be done here at the building for, for our workers. The code and the other two vehicles, I don't know, maybe we can purchase one and then use one of the expeditions. We're at like 65. I, maybe we have 75. I'm one that rainy days are good, and we just never know when we're going to need it. And so just because we have it doesn't mean we need to spend it all. And we need to try and look at the groups that we have and spread it out as much as we can, but still have someone filter. So kind of what I've figured out, we're at about 65, and we can still get everybody something. But is this 75 minus the two vehicles already for the sheriff's department?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Thaubie, do you have a second?
I would like to take the 30 for the animal shelter completely out of the 70 that we have in the fund for the building and structures. In that way, we could do the 30 for the tri-county juvenile justice, and we can, that would leave us approximately $45,000 to discuss, you know, for the P and Z and the panic buttons. And we could still dig that up and still probably have a little bit for a rainy day. You know, maybe looking at one vehicle, like you say, or I know Joy had given us some prices for some used vehicles also. Maybe we can shift some things around to get vehicles that can be utilized until we can afford a better.
So you're saying to take the full $30,000 out of infrastructure?
Infrastructure, and that would leave 40 still in the fund.
I think I would like to go in that direction as well, to pull that full 30 out of that fund. Tracy?
I just had a question. Is the equipment that we're purchasing, would that, would that be considered infrastructure? Is that an allowable expense?
I can't hear what you're saying, I'm sorry.
Could you come to the podium so that we felt we could capture the question?
You mean for the office security?
For the animal shelter, I'm not sure. You said it was $18,000 plus equipment, and I wasn't sure what kind of equipment.
Well, it's going to be building, plumbing, sinks, kennels, and I think that would qualify under infrastructure.
They would all be permanent structures within the building, Joy? They would all be permanent fixtures within the building?
Well, I'd like permanent.
Okay, okay.
As long as it adds to the permanent structure, that's not portable equipment, that if it's portable kennels, I don't, it has to be a capital expense.
Okay.
Thank you. Are you comfortable with that question, and to get out of that fund and left 40 in there?
If that money can be used for that, I mean, that's, if it's not, then we need to be careful. If it's for infrastructure and kennels, we're not a part of that, but we can't be spending money with it. So if, if everything that was just said is not true, then fine, let's go ahead and take the 30. If not, then we can have it there.
Okay. Cindy, did you have a final comment?
The design that we're looking at, there will be no portable making it, it will all be concreted.
Okay, that answers the question.
Thank you. So it seems like we are all at a point on this particular item where we could call for a motion for the animal shelter addition. So is there a motion on the table?
So moved to build the animal shelter, the addition, from the infrastructure fund to full amount, 30,000.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. So we'll just go down the list. How would we like to proceed for the vehicles for code enforcement and maintenance? Do we want to table this? Do we want to take action today?
I move that we table this until we look at what we actually have and what we can get.
Okay, there is a motion on the table to table. Is there a second on that request? It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that request has been tabled. Security for elected officials, we don't have the information on that, so if you could bring that back to us, Nick, as soon as it comes in.
Just to add one comment, I was a little confused yesterday because Dorothy was the one that brought the request to you for the county treasurer's office. So I took it upon myself to have the contractor walk through all the elected officials' offices, because that's what was on the agenda. So just as of yesterday, it was just clerk, treasurer, assessor. I'm not too sure how the sheriff would.
Sheriff might not need a panic button.
If his button was pushed, who do they call? But anyways, I did include their office as well, because that's how I interpreted the agenda, elected officials' offices. So once I get that, I will forward it off to you, so.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we table this also. If there's further information, it's okay.
Thank you, there is a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We will now go to the tri-county juvenile justice forum. Is there a motion on this request?
Make a motion that we go ahead and fund the $30,000 request.
There is a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that there are two votes in favor, and I abstained. Now we will go to the Tahica Community Center. Or is there any, you know, I'm comfortable tabling this as well until maybe we can get someone to go out and get us some quotes or bids on what we can do to fix it?
Madam Chair, I've Madam Chair, I'd feel more comfortable if we had an amount to where we could look at this remainder and try to divvy it up between the other projects.
Okay.
The stuff to it, so I'll make the motion that we table this one also.
Thank you, there is a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, so county storage, does that require that we table that as well, or do we just let that one go?
If anything, we make a motion that we proceed with the sheriff getting the building that he's speaking of and using it for the storage facility.
Thank you, Commissioner, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. There's a lot of happy people today. Item number 14, that has been moved up, the children's trust fund grant application, passed.
Commissioner's county manager, I appreciate you moving this up, I have to get this filed in Santa Fe, so thank you very much. The children's trust fund is a most unique grant. It is a recurring grant, and Torrance County never had a children's trust fund grant until 2007. And for those of you that don't know, this was Alice King's baby. We, the state of New Mexico would not have a children's trust fund program without the gracious Mrs. King. And it came about because in late 2006, I had a phone call from Mrs. King saying, Pat, why don't we have a children's trust fund grant in Torrance County? And I said, Mrs. King, I assume it's because it hasn't ever been applied for. And she said, well, we need to do something about that. And so then I had a follow-up call about three or four weeks later from Solida Martinez, who was the program manager of children's trust fund about that time, and she said, I've been instructed to call you and tell you that Torrance County needs to apply for the children's trust fund grant and the new cycle is coming up. And so we then applied and we had children's trust fund program for a three-year cycle. And there is a new cycle that is coming up now. The programs must be innovative, they cannot duplicate what you did before. And the range is from 20,000 to 70,000. I'm requesting that we apply for this, and I will just give you the risk factors that I have included, so you can kind of understand where we're at. In our assessment, we identified that Torrance County has the second highest rate of substantiated child sexual abuse in New Mexico, the 10th highest rate of substantiated physical abuse in the state, the 7th highest child victim of domestic abuse rate in the state, the first highest panic recipient rate in the state, the second highest SNAP rate in the state, and an increase of 18.7% of Torrance County children receiving childcare assistance subsidies over the one-year period. Those last three statistics came from the monthly statistical report for May of 2001, so they're very current. In addition, we have 35, or 36.5% of our children under 18 who are living in poverty, and our unemployment rate is 10.3% compared to 8.4% in Mexico and 9.6% for the United States. So we have some significant risk factors and problems to address. The children's trust fund is specifically to target child abuse and neglect, and it provides primary prevention and secondary prevention of dollars, and the emphasis is on also incorporating educational strategies. So this request is for $44,352, which is what we applied for in 2007. It's in the middle because our population is in the middle to the lower end. We refunded it 35,000, which maybe we're refunded at again, but we were able to accomplish really good things with that money for that three-year period. We had parenting classes, we had the Kohl's Andubian prenatal curriculum, and we were serving those mothers and fathers, we were getting them into early prenatal care. The people participating in the program were receiving nutrition education through our partnership with the extension office. They were receiving postnatal exercise and nutrition through a program that we sponsored at the Estancia Community Center, and we had great outcomes. So we have a good track record to build on. This time, we are taking that education focus and we're asking for this $44,352 as programming dollars to support the K-3 tutoring program that I just explained to you that we will now be able to hopefully house in this local facility. We apply for one year, but it's a three-year cycle of recurring funds. You do have to do a modified D application every year. There is no match on these dollars, but it provides wonderful leverage, and we also will have leverage to use to secure some other funding. So I would request that you allow Torrance County to apply for the children's trust fund grant. The partnership for healthy Torrance County has agreed to again serve as the advisory board for this, and their partnership will be with the Torrance County Juvenile Justice Board, who will also provide oversight and administrative assistance on this. And the executive committee of the Juvenile Justice Board has also approved instituting what this takes like.
Thank you, Pat, we're now at the table for questions, are there any questions?
I have none, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. So we are now prepared to receive a motion for approval. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Pat.